In accordance to Chapter 231 of Public Law 1975, further in accordance with NJSA 10:44-21, a copy of this notice is posted outside the secretary's office and a copy also filed with the clerk of the borough of Cerebral. Please rise for the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And, boys and girls, that was a beautiful pledge of allegiance. Mr. DeAndre, roll call.
Mr. Balka.
Here.
Mrs. Backo.
Here.
Mrs. Bloom.
Here.
Mr. Brzezinski.
Here.
Mrs. DeBento.
Here.
Mr. McInerney.
My friends.
Mrs. Trapp.
Here.
Mr. Walsh.
Here.
And Mr. Sya.
Here. Could you outline what we discussed in our very long closed session?
This evening in executive session, under negotiations, the board discussed the Saebel Education Association Memorandum of Agreement, the Saebel Principles Association, status of the negotiations, the school calendar for 2013-14, request for a pay difference by three SEA members under personnel, chief technology officer, director of special projects/technology, dean of discipline under student discipline, Hibb reports 2013-14-18 through 22, no discussion on attorney-client privilege for the superintendent search.
Thank you very much. We have a presentation this evening. We're going to get very artistic, both drawing-wise and musically, so I'd like to introduce Mrs. Carmen Davies, our principal of Wilson School, to introduce tonight's program. Mrs. Davies?
(applause) I just want to thank all of the parents and family coming out so that we could just take a glimpse of what we do every day at Wilson Elementary School. For many of you who do not know who I am, I am Carmen Davis, your principal at Wilson Elementary School. I just want to present to Dr. Alfano, our superintendent, to Carolyn Shebiak, our assistant superintendent, and to Ann Fashendo, our assistant superintendent, to our Board of Ed, thank you for inviting us. And so, I know we only have a brief moment, but I just want to give you a glimpse of what we do. We believe strongly that we have the characteristics of a high-performance school. We are the castle on a hill, that's the mid句 for us. We believe strongly in a rigorous curriculum, and we believe in focusing in on all content areas, but tonight, I'm just going to show you a little teeny tidbit of some of the things we do. One of the things we do, I would like to introduce Mrs. Magistro, our master teacher or ASI mathematician.[198.84][198.84](applause) She's just going to take a minute to talk about doing this service because we really believe that we want to strengthen our ties between home and school, we want to develop strong partnerships so that we work together, play together as a family. April?
Thank you so much. Hello, good evening. My name is April Magistro, and I am Wilson School's ASI math teacher and this year's Math-a-Thon coordinator. I would like to thank the Board of Education for allowing me to spotlight five amazing children this evening. I would also like to thank Amy Stubber for, she started this program in 2004, and it has been going strong ever since, so thank you, Amy.[247.95][247.95](applause) This program is an amazing opportunity for children to help children, and that's what we did at Wilson School. What we did was we'd have a math program, and the math program, and we collect donations from sponsors, and together, we have collected, this year, $7,000, a record-breaking $7,000.[275.33][275.33](applause) But I would like to add that in the past, we have, all together, to date, have collected $33,000, so we're looking at the $40,000 mark, so yay![288.83][288.83](applause) Wilson is a small, but very quaint school, near and dear to my heart, and to reach this goal, I may have dangled several pizza parties, several, but we did reach our goal this year, so I am excited about that. Now, what I would like to do is I would like to recognize some of the children who raised, I felt, an extraordinary amount of money this year, and I would like to share a little bit about these students. I do not want to put them on the spot, but I will tell you, however, that one of these children did raise $1,500 by himself.
Wow.
Another shook down a home alarm tech for $10 for the Math-a-Thon, so she said, "You are not leaving until you give me your money."[341.00][341.00](laughter) It is okay to beg your family members through text messages for donations, that was completely acceptable in my eyes. And two participants actually found that the power of online funding, and they did express that you are allowed to even make a credit card donation, and that was acceptable. So that worked very well for our Math-a-Thon this year. I would like for you to meet these fantastic Wilson schoolers right now. May I have to the front, Pranavi Malugu.[375.53][375.53](applause) Is she coming?
She's coming.
She's not coming. Parking was made. How about Isabella Cuomo?[394.03][394.03](applause) Just for the family, so they can see. There you go, baby. Good job. Catherine Martin.[406.43][406.43](applause) Stay up here, baby.
Stay up, stay up.
It's a photo opportunity. You show off your greatness. There you go. John Markovich.[428.12][428.12](applause) Uh-oh, that doesn't say your name. That says Katerina. Don't come running, Katerina, hold on there, babe. John Markovich.[443.62][443.62](applause) Katerina Kanodrikas.[451.31][451.31](applause) Okay, hold them up. Stand together. You may now take pictures.
Get in there.
Oh, right.
Get in there.
Don't go anywhere yet. Photo op, we'll photo op. Not only do these students earn this beautiful plaque this evening, but they will also receive a Wilson School Store $5 gift card.[490.31][490.31](applause) There you go. Katerina. John. Handmade, by myself. There you go. You're welcome, don't drop your plaque. Let the plastic fall. Okay. I am so proud of all the children who have participated in this year's Math-a-Thon. At our school, in the near future, we will be celebrating more. These are just a few of the children that I wanted to spotlight this evening because they did just a fabulous job. So ladies and gentlemen, what I would like for you to see in front of you is not only mathematicians, but you have children right in front of your very eyes that have giant dedicated hearts. They will change the lives of so many children who need their help, so I am proud to know them. These children are our future, they are our future. I'm just proud to know them and work with them every day. So congratulations, and thank you so much for coming.[551.66][551.66](applause) Thank you.
Okay, I don't want to be a diss, but I actually forgot to introduce my administrative team, that's right, for the administration team, if you didn't know. I have a principal, and I have a vice principal working for me, they work very hard. May I have Ariana Vera, my first vice principal, and Devon Bill, my principal.[589.16][589.16](applause) And then I'm going to introduce Mrs. Lukowski, our art director, who's just going to tell you a little bit about what we do for art.
(inaudible)
If you'd be able to, may I have charcoal pencils, erasers, and brown paint, that's what we're doing. (inaudible)
Yeah, how about over there by the mic? This way we can all hear you.
No, I don't need a mic. (inaudible). Mrs. Magistro, student of mine way back, she was in Wilson School. A little bit about me, I began my teaching career in Catholic High School in 1977 when it was arranged with Lasky, came to Cerebral in 1981, where I have been ever since. And I love what I do, I teach little children, do very creative every single day. I talk a lot about art history, I throw those names out there at them, art buzzwords, vocabulary, portraiture and portraits, or, what?
Oh, there we go.
I'll never be able to draw.
Excellent.
Oh, no? Okay. I'll try. I'm learning. Um, portraiture, I'd like to show you this evening, on the day of Pazzicchiani, my third graders have been working on portraiture, and I was hoping today that I would just maybe perhaps begin with you, those sketching if you like, I'll show you what I do with them. I do try to bring the art history in, my whole idea of art history in the curriculum truly is to be able to have them recognize it somewhere during their life, in a movie, in a museum, on a bus, in a magazine, sitting in a doctor's office, all of a sudden they'll say, "I know that, we studied that." On the day of Pazzicchiani, this is a very good portrait, I'm very good with that, truly. Portrait artist, he loves graphics for you, very unusual style, I talk a lot about his style, and he had elongated necks, elongated noses, very short life, only lived 35 years, he loved portraits in that time. I talk about how this is what the camera will all have. Portraits were painted because they didn't exist, cameras would not exist, this was recorded history of family members, certainly dating the times. You might just throw me off. Another one, this is actually, I believe, Thor Aspic, where they use it, there appears a long, long neck, elongated noses. What I thought I would do with you is, I'm going to just turn off my light. If you'd like to sketch with me, I will begin with what I have those third graders do, start with an oval, and I apologize.
The pressure's on you, Lucy. Yeah, Mrs. Bloom, you've got to carry us here, because I can't draw a straight line with a roller.
(inaudible) Simply, simply, long, long neck. This is how we introduce the art style of Pazzicchiani to my third graders. We've been doing eye field now, since I've met them, so they have prior knowledge absolutely of where to place eyes, where to use nose, and of course, of lips. I always explain, and they can always be able to tell you, eyes look like footballs, or leaves, or almonds. So if you like, you can certainly put two eyes on that paper, two and a half. The nose, the human nose is probably the toughest thing to draw. I always explain to them, and this is a very long, long nose, is his style. And I apologize. Noses, I explain, are small seeds, backward seeds, a little happy. Mouths are always a minus sign, with a heart at the top, and then just a rough lip, like you. And I just allow them to put simple, simple shoulders, we're talking about portraits and shoulders, just do some kind of a neckline, embellish a little bit with some detail, usually a little pocket, any kind of hair that they would like to do. They can do hair that would be from 100 years ago, and they give me outstanding styles from 100 years ago, or to some kind of, a lot of people like spike hair, so I'm usually with spike. I'm just going to do a cute little, I am from the sixties, of course.
That's her pocket.
Simple, simple, simple.
Oh, is that what?
And then I always talk about placement, where are they? So we, for this particular lesson, I have them inside a room, and I had said to them just, something simple to a background, perhaps just a wall behind them. And... It was simple, simple. Why am I doing this? Nice.
Mike, can we see yours?[1005.12][1005.12](laughter)
You're an alien.
Long necks, long necks. You're working, I know.
You taught me well.
How nice is that? You always thought you wore them back to England, your passion, not with your whole life.
Mrs. Bloom is adding flair to hers.
Trying my best.
Not fair.[1016.12][1016.12](laughter)
And with that, I would just like to show you what my eight-year-old does.
She's better than me. Mike, she has an eraser though.
My guy's bald.
Let's have a round of applause for our Board of Education artists.
Good hair, child.
Wow. I think it's an alien.
Isn't it? This is what they get.
Ah.
Oh, hello.
Very nice.[1051.12][1051.12](applause) Can you flip that around as well, so the public can...
I think the board should hold up theirs.[1062.12][1062.12](laughter)
Hey, I'm an artist. Only two days.
Come on, board members. Very good, Mrs. DeBento. Wow, look at this.
Okay.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Lukowski, and thank you, Board of Ed, for just humoring us a little bit.[1085.88][1085.88](applause)
I will never get their attention back again for the rest of the meeting.
And we're going to just end with our music department, they're going to sing a song, and also too, we have the recorders. Thank you again.[1099.25][1099.25](applause)
Thank you, Mrs. Lukowski, visiting Mrs. Lukowski, the artist. I think we both, because we are running over late, I was going to talk about the importance of arts and music and education, but I think most of us here in the community of Saebel get that. I would like to thank the Board of Education, I'd like to thank the administrators, and especially the Saebel community for supporting the arts all these years, and it's a pleasure to be working here, I do appreciate it. Very special thank you to Mrs. Davis, for not only her support, but her encouragement with the music program, and a very, very special thank you to Dr. Alfano, who's supported the arts and myself over the years, thank you. What we'll do is just talk briefly about, music class is great for me because I get to work from the inside out. Most students love music, and I just try to get them to become better listeners and try to describe what they're hearing, what they're putting towards. Our chorus is sort of an accumulation of what we've been doing since kindergarten and high school. It's as much of a music ensemble as it is a chorus. You're all lucky to come to a show maybe the 29th, and you can see we have more songs, have more instruments, and more choreography. But right now, we're just going to give you a little example of what we do. If you would please rise, as we will sing our national anthem, "The Stars Spoke a Lot."[1203.12][1203.12](music playing) (singing) last gleaming, whose stars shone bright stars through the perilous night? O'er the land we watched, birds of gallantly streaming, and the rocket's red glare, the hoovers singing in air, it proved to the eye that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave, o'er the land of free and the home of the brave?[1327.12][1327.12](applause) Thank you. Please be seated, and we should welcome the president of chairs this way for the conference. Next, we're just going to give a little example, we do start with the recorders in the third grade. Take your places, students. Adrian, stand up. Go easy, watch yourself, everybody goes. We hope many of the students go on to the UES, middle school and high school, and maybe beyond, and continue to play instruments, and if they don't continue to play instruments, at least they'll have a better understanding and appreciation for them. We're just going to go right to a rockin' song, this is called "We Will Rock You."[1373.12][1373.12](music playing) (singing) (music 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 playing) (singing) (Music) 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 Thank you. The last piece we're going to play for you is "Hastings, Character Education," contemporary piece of music by Bruno Morris called, "Count On Me." (Music) 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 Thank you very much. Please, take it back. (Applause) 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 Also too, I wanted to thank our PTO president and all of the officers who helped us get this all together and bring all the families in. Juliette, president of our PTO, I want to thank you. Thank you for designing the slides. (Applause) And they say that a poor man is not a man without a nickel, but a man without a dream. This is where we are. What a beautiful place to be. Saraville Public School District, Wilson Elementary School. Thank you Board of Ed. Thank you again.
Mrs. Davies and the Wilson School team, I really want to thank you for this presentation. It was great. What it really impresses me about it is the fact that it is clearly cross-curricular. We saw the art piece, we saw the music piece. The music piece integrated community service, character education. We saw the community piece here, the music piece integrated the reading to it. So what you're seeing is a complete picture of what Wilson School has to offer in one integrated program. So thank you very much. Any board members wish to offer comments?
Castle on the hill. Look, castle on the hill.
All right, we're going to begin our meeting at this point. All of you are welcome to stay, but should some of you have homework to do, you are also free to leave at this particular point.
Okay. See you next time.
(Laughter)
(Coughs)
How is flesh, Mr. Mackinon?
I started painting subway cars, gray cans in Brooklyn.
I was figuring, Brooklyn, that's how you had to learn.
And then a bump.
Yeah, pretty, yeah, pretty good. Yeah. Good.
You know what I can't figure out? How do you get to spray paint them as the trains are moving?
No, it's dude, he was placed guys.
Mr. DeWier, thank you very much.
Let me see your picture.
Always a pleasure, my friend.
Very good, thank you.
Ms. Davies, good job. Thank you.
It looks like you.
Well, you know, I have.
Come on, fellas, we didn't see your artwork.
He's got a crown. It's a princess.
It's a princess.
What was that, a witch's hat? What was that? I couldn't make it. Was that a crown or a witch's hat? I didn't see.
There can be too many blue.
What do you want?
I actually, I actually did better than I thought. I thought you got it first, that's why I said great.
(Laughter)
I made some promises.
He was, he was cock.
I've obviously, I'm trying to think of one, I can't, I knew that song.
I heard they got Freddie Mercury to fly from American Idol.
Really?
But it's Brian May, and I can't remember the other guy. What's the other guy's name?
Eulation.
Brian is based, I can't remember that.
(Inaudible)
Freddie's voice is absolutely.
Also, we'll be discussing the, uh, the school calendar tonight, so if you'd like to participate in that discussion, please feel free. Uh, parent involvement council report, uh, did the parent involvement council meet last week, correct?
Yes.
Either, okay.
Okay. Yes, we had a meeting last Monday, and we had about twenty-five parents in attendance. The topic was the New Envision Math Series, and Mr. Preston, Dr. Trevisono, and Mrs. Stuber all presented to the parents, helped to answer many questions they had concerning the new math series, and I think everyone went away feeling that they really learned something about it. Our next meeting will be on Monday, April 7th, and the police chief and Detective Sprague will be the guest speakers, and they will be doing a presentation on the drug Molly. So we hope everyone will be able to attend.
Thank you. Also, in the area of parent involvement, on Monday, March 31st, here at the high school, we will be having a session to get community input with regard to the superintendent's search to aid the board in the interview process. So there will be three sessions held. Uh, two will be held in the afternoon for the faculty, and you'll be getting information on that via email tomorrow, and then, uh, one will be held in the evening for community members. There's a press release which will be issued to the newspapers, and, uh, letters will be going home with the kindergarten through fifth grade, uh, students to inform them to, so that parents are informed of the, uh, meeting opportunity as well. Uh, so you can keep that date, uh, in mind.
Seven o'clock, right?
Seven PM for the, uh, for the parents.
Okay.
Uh, there's no attorney's report, district highlights. Uh, Mrs. DePinto is feeling under the weather, uh, today, so to save her voice, our president emeritus, uh, Mr. McEnown, is going to, uh, read the district highlights.
I'm not worthy, but I'll give it a shot. Congratulations to the following Sable War Memorial High School juniors who were selected as delegates and alternate delegates to participate in the American Legion Jersey Boys Day Program. The delegates were Alvin George, Akash Patel, Philip Callic, and Nora Tivar, Adrian Lipinski. And the alternates were Andrew Danchisco, Stephen Ross, Quayem Asuku, Ashun Krishna, and Shalyn Moody. Um, and we're fortunate in Sable to have an American Legion Post 211 that sponsors this every year. It is great pleasure that we announced Team 4-7 students of the Samson Upper Elementary School have been chosen as the first-place winners in the Arc of New Jersey Everyone Belongs Bulletin Board Contest, the elementary school grades three through five. A photo of the winning bulletin board will be displayed on the exhibit board at the State House in Trenton the week of March 17th through March 21st, where all legislators and visitors to the State House will be able to see the fine work of the winning students. Congratulations to Team 4-7. Congratulations to the following two Sable War Memorial High School students who were chosen for the Middlesex County School Boards Association, Middlesex County Association of School Administrators 2013-14 Student Recognition Program. Nishy Kadakia, a senior, and Gina Calendrello, a sophomore at Sable Warner High School, were chosen to represent Sable in this prestigious program. Students like these certainly make us proud, and, Mr. President, that is the highlights.
Thank you very much, Mr. McEnown. Uh, we'll move on to the superintendent's report, Dr. Alphano.
Thank you, Mr. Sayah. Building grounds, um, we have a few, um, building use, um, at the high school, and for the cultural event, as noted in number one, and the high school for the Lions Club on April 13th. Uh, moving to the next page, this is the use of the parking lot by the Temple Organization in numbers three and four, as noted. Uh, number five is also a use of the gymnasium for, uh, instructional baseball camp. Um, six is the, uh, use of, again, the media center at, uh, the high school for the Sable Art Department Program, an art show, again, used the high school stadium field for the, uh, football camp, noted in number seven. Um, there's also a football skills camp in number eight, also the use of the building for the chorus rooms and band for the Stardust and Musical Theater Workshop for children, which is also held in the summer. Um, 2012-13 HIP grade, uh, for the Sable Public Schools, which is located on the, uh, website and in addendums A1, A2, and A3, which is attached, and it is required, and we are at about approximately eighty-eight percent, I believe, of the, um, school's, uh, score, so, uh, which is very good. Uh, moving along, uh, use of the, um, approval of the gymnasium, again, for a basketball camp, girls softball, as well as, um, the American Legion Baseball Program on Saturdays. Any questions with that section? A.
I have a comment. I, I'm okay with, uh, on page three, number three and four, uh, for March and April, but I think that we should postpone approving August through November, just not knowing what's going to be happening that far in advance.
So, so you're recommending that they come back to us, then, with a request for the additional dates at a-
Right.
In a couple of months?
From, from August on.
Okay, is, are you making a motion?
Yes.
I've got a motion. Do I have a second?
I second.
Okay, I have a motion and second, and discussion?
Apology, who's the second?
Mrs. DePinto. And, and the motion is to, uh, I guess defer the August dates and beyond, and require them to submit a requ- a separate request at a, uh, date closer to the actual usage.
Yeah, but those dates are fixed dates for their functions.
But how do we know what functions we're gonna have that may conflict with that?
Well, now we know the dates they're requesting.
But, or shouldn't our functions come first? What if we have something that we may need the parking lots for?
We may have back-to-school night, we may have, um, any, any kind of activities that, I don't want to limit our par- I don't want to give away our parking lot until we're sure that we're not going to be using it.
Good, good, good explanation.
No, thank you.
Have we checked Community Unity Day or Sable Day, um, against these dates? I don't know if there is one this year or not.
I, I have not checked.
The borough hasn't published that date yet.
It's always in September.
That's in September?
There is one, Kevin. It's more than same day as one.
Okay.
In September, right?
It's like the middle of September.
Okay.
It's usually, um, Sunday during the day, and these look like it's Sunday, the Sundays-
Five, they're always later.
Got it, okay.
They're later, so.
All right, any other discussion on the motion?
We still haven't charged them for any use of the parking lot, correct?
We do not charge them for any use of the parking lot.
And, can we all, I mean, do we have, on the application, I assume they filed the application, does it say parking in designated spots only, or is it just they can park wherever they want? That's my only other concern.
Uh, I don't know that answer. Uh, it's the application-
It doesn't have that.
It doesn't say.
No, they're, they're asking for use of the parking lots, that's all.
Well, we're presuming that they're not gonna park on the grass. I mean, is that, is that, is that an obvious assumption?
You mean like, like in a football game? I mean, I, yeah. We, we don't have security here, folks, so I cannot tell you where they park, how they park, we just permit them to park on our property.
Sort of just, kind of like as if it was Sable Day, we don't, we don't let them know where they need to park and not park, right?
The understanding is they're parking in designated spots.
Right.
I cannot tell you if they do or do not.
Well, the borough ordinance, it says you have to park on paper, and if it's not, then, um, you know, I, I know usually at these functions, the auxiliary police is dispatched, and that's the enforcement side of it.
Okay.
It's not a, it's public property, so I don't know how you deny it.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, the motion is to, uh, defer approval on the August through, uh, August and beyond dates. Roll call.
Well, what I'm doing, Kevin, is having the motion, it's a motion to amend A3 and A4 to remove August 14 through 11-
August 17.
11 of, through November of 14.
Okay.
That way, we're approving that, just removing that part.
Mrs. Strapp, you're good with that wording?
Yep.
Mrs. DePinto?
Yes.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Balter.
I was gonna vote no on both of them anyway, so how's this affect that?
I guess you have to vote either yes or no to amend it, and then you vote no on the motion.
Yes, amend it.
Mrs. Bakker.
Um, what about?
Mrs. Bakker.
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom.
Yes.
Mr. Brozinski.
Yes.
Mrs. DePinto.
Yes.
Mr. McEnown.
Yes.
Mrs. Strapp.
Yes.
Mr. Walsh.
Yes.
And Mr. Sayah.
Yes.
So the board is no longer voting on August 17th through November 8th on either one of the motions.
Okay. So when we do a roll call on the superintendent's report, those dates will not be included.
And if I could ask, since Mr. Balter, will, will I note that you're voting no on both of those now?
Yes, correct.
Is anyone else voting no on both of those items now?
I'll be voting no on both of them.
Okay, you also have Mrs. Bakker, anyone else?
These are the largest public parking lots, and, so if you deny the use of it, where will these parks be on the residential blocks?
They happened during a football game last year, they ended up using Bailey's Park, I believe, and-
That's used too, though. Bailey's Park is used, they didn't file an application, Bailey's Park is used, um, uh, the park, what's that park on Minnesick at the end there?
That's Bailey's Park.
Bailey's Park and the other park on Washington Road.
Burke's Park.
Burke's Park.
Well, that's used, I mean, you're talking about thousands of vehicles here. That's always been my, you know, point, it, it helps the communities by saying, hey, you can park in these big pla- lots. Um, there was some talk about the bus lot on, um, who is that, on Raritan Street? But that's, that's not public property, that's private property, and that, that's the issue, so. I understand what you're saying, I, I've seen the chaos.
We pay to pay that, that's not borough property?
No, it's not. It's permitted by the use of, um, of, in New Jersey Transit, so. I mean, it's the only largest parking lots that the town has, so it's just an issue that I think we have to be careful that we go down with. But, it's my comment.
Okay, any other comments on the item?
Uh, question for Frank. Uh, number one, is it the one with the, uh, that has the candles and flames in the building, or no? Do you know if that's the group?
No idea.
No idea.
And we've got policy on that, anyway, so we're good.
I, I honestly don't know. B, finance, 1 through 12 are regular resolutions, 13 is an abolishment of a position, as noted. 14 and 15 are, uh, are, uh, two additions of positions, 16 is a disposal of, uh, of those items that are listed. 17 is, um, to give the business administrator the right to bid, um, for transportation, um, purchasing awards for plaques, and attendance for graduation scholarships, authorizing the business administrator, proposed tentative budget, as noted. Mr. DeAndrea, would you like to just make a comment about number 19?
Uh, the only comment is, is we're once again at cap, uh, we are, uh, we are at the 2% as required by law, uh, the committee recommended going to that cap number at this point in time.
Thank you, Mr. DeAndrea. Number 20 is Ms. Shettyak's, um, workshop that she goes to. Um, 21 and 22 are the abolishment of two positions, and 23 and 24 is making them longer day, all right? They usually, they were three-fifths and two-fifths, now they're full-time and four-fifths, uh, due to the over-enrollment of special education children. Uh, also a part-time power professional is part of that as well. Uh, also to improve PSENG Direct Install Program of Energy Efficiency at the Arleth School. 27 is the meeting dates, as noted, for the, uh, replacement of the superintendent and the meetings that go along with it. The public hearing this year is May 6th on the, uh, budget, and the attendance of Ms. Kompaski to her workshop. 30 is the approval of the following amendment grant offsets. 31 is a, uh, professional development services for Google with Chromebooks for the teachers at the noted price. Any questions with section B?
I do, Dr. Alphano. On number 27, I, I know we discussed these dates, um, for the, uh, interviews, Mr. Sayah.
Yes.
But, um, 23rd, 4:15, I don't recall that time, 'cause I know that's impossible for me to make anything early than 5:00, and that's why we made everything 5:30 or 6:00. The 4:15, how did that get there?
And I saw an email, I think from Mrs. Strapp, with some confusion on that as well, and, Mr. DeAndrea, you had that in your notes, correct?
I had that from the schedule that, um, Mrs. Thornton sent to us, saying 4:15.
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying to understand the uniqueness of that date.
I, I have a fe-
I think there was functions, there were several functions that evening.
That was the Spanish Honor Society.
We were gonna do it in the, in the library.
Everything's in the media center.
Correct.
What day of the week is the 23rd?
A Wednesday, if I remember.
Now, now, if that is, and I remember, we had discussions about this, and the date was, the time was problematic, could we have agreed on 5:15?
No.
It was 4:15.
It was because of the Spanish Honor Society that we did it.
'Cause we needed, we needed to be completed by 7:00, and I guess we're doing an hour each, is that how it's working?
Yeah.
So, 6:00, 5:00, so, um, can we change-
Again, why, why do we have to be complete if we're doing it on that side of the building, again?
Because some of us want to attend-
People wanted to attend other functions that evening.
Some may have children that are being adopted.
So can we do it for 5:00 and 6:00, and be out of there for se- by 7:00?
I don't know, I mean, I, uh, look, leave it there, and that's my problem, I'll work out, I guess, if, if that's, if I'm the minority in it, then I'll-
Well, yeah, but Michael, you-
What, what is the earliest you could get here?
Well, I can't leave till 4:00.
So that probably means you can't be here for 4:15.
Unless I travel at the speed of light.
And the trip will catch up to you.
But maybe I, maybe I can, um, work out something and try to leave at 3:30, 4:00. I don't, I don't, I just don't remember the conversation, that's all.
Make it 4:30.
4:30 would give me 15 women in it.
And if, but if you left at 3:30, you could make it by 4:30, right?
For pleasure to change it to 4:30.
Is anyone opposed to making it 4:30?
Okay.
Hearing none?
Right.
We'll have that noted as 4:30?
I appreciate the compromise.
So now you need to travel at half the speed of light.
Okay.
Can I share with you what's written in my calendar for that date, Mr. McEnown?
What's that?
It says cruise on my calendar for that date.
Oh, well.
Since I'm conflicted, I'm outta here.
Well, the circle line, it lasts, is-
Okay, Mrs. Bloom's cruise is not on the agenda, so next.
I'm gonna have to stay on number eight.
Number eight is not, it's the finance.
That's the treasurer's, treasurer's.
All right, any other items under, uh, finance?
No on number 14 for me.
No on number 14.
And I'll be voting no on number 14.
Okay. Any other comments under finance?
A good job with the budget. Um, I didn't see anything, and yet I had any issue with it.
I would agree. Any other comments? Hearing non-personnel, non-certified, Dr. Alphano.
Uh, grand retro- retroactive unpaid medical leave, um, there's, uh, two of them. Uh, increase in salary for, uh, the individual is noted for a black seal. Um, approve the employment of the following individual for a Truman School custodian. Um, professional days is noted in number five and some substitutes. Any questions with that section?
I have a question. When we have a security guard go out on a leave, do we, uh-
Yes.
-get a replacement?
Not that I know of.
So we're just that one.
Yep. D, personnel certified, um, I would like to make a comment, um, actually, there are three very, um, distinguished individuals who are retiring, but, um, most of all, um, I would like to make mention of Ms. Mazur, who I worked with for many years at the, uh, middle school, and we're going to miss her as a, as a, uh, social study teacher, and Paulette Hudak, who, Mr. Hudak, who is an awesome gentleman, was one of my favorite people, and I'm gonna miss Paulette, but most of all, um, really a friend, and, and really has been a confidant, and a just an absolutely perfect individual, as far as I'm concerned, and we're all gonna miss her, is, uh, I guess she's leaving because I'm leaving, what, what could you say? Um, is, uh, is the retirement of Ms. Brady, and Ms. Brady, we're all gonna miss you, and I'm sure that's, uh- I don't know what to say, but I guess we'll meet each other down the shore. Um, but, uh, I'm sure, uh, a few people will come up and have a comment or so about Ms. Brady's, uh, magnificent career here at, uh, Sable, and, uh, she certainly will be missed. Um, unpaid medical leave is noted in, uh, five, uh, four and five, uh, acceptance of a, a retroactive resignation from the commission, uh, resignation of, uh, Ms. Romero from the track, um, team, um, and the approval of, um, two teachers to go on the National Science Teachers Association Convention, as noted. Um, some, uh, a salary adjustment for the 14-15 school year regarding a degree status change, um, a transfer of an occupational therapist, as we discussed before, uh, a transfer of an occupational therapist is noted, and a, the following personnel coaching assignments, as noted, uh, for the Assent and Spring Girls Track Coach. Um, noted, uh, the professional days for our certificated individuals on pages 12 through 14, New Jersey Ask Tutorial Program Teachers, as noted, um, for the elementaries, and also for the, um, grade six to eight program. Also, within this section is the curriculum revision writers, as noted on page 15, and also there's a few employments, as noted in 17 and in 18, and some additional substitutes, as noted. Um, also on this section, there are three additional, um, resolutions, starting 21. The Board of Education has requested to approve salary minus $125 Level 3 substitute rate for each sick day taken for employee Lori Herschkowitz, kindergarten teacher at the Eisenhower School, for the period from April 1st, 2014, through June 30th, 2014, or when she returns not to exceed $15,000. The Board of Education, 22, is requested to approve salary minus $125 Level 3, um, substitute rate for each sick day taken for employee Jean Marie Jukione, grade 2 teacher at Arleth School, for the period from November 13, 2013, through June 13, June 30th, 2014, not to exceed, uh, $15,000. I believe Ms. Herschkowitz is a date of start date is March 28th, so make, make a note of that, make that change, um, rather than April 1st, but I could be wrong, but I believe it's, that's her first date, would be March 28th. And finally, number 29, the Board of Education requested to approve salary, um, minus $125 Level 3 substitute rate for each sick day taken for employee Danielle Sozio, Resource Center teacher at the elemen- at the Arleth Elementary School for the period of March 28, 2014, through June 30th, 2014, not to exceed $15,000. All three of these resolutions are contingent upon individuals who run out of sick days. That's when they actually start, just in case the date is, is not accurate. So again, every one of them, those, those individuals, uh, it's when their dates of running out of days. Any questions with that section?
Comments on personnel certified, and I know there are at least one.
Yes, I have a, a comment, uh, on Mrs. Brady's retirement. I would like to vote no on that, but I, I know I can't. Um, thank you. I, I, I met Bonnie Brady the first time, uh, when she was my daughter's fourth-grade teacher at Arleth, and my daughter now, she's 23, so that goes back a while, and when I first observed her, you know, I, I noticed, um, that my daughter was in the hands of an intelligent, professional, passionate educator, and I remember a, a, a specific event, um, when they went to Borough Hall to brief the council on how to eliminate the goose poo problem in Kennedy Park, and all the-
(inaudible)
................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
I'm sorry, next year. Next year, sorry.
Yeah, next year, right. So, so, we have two, two days that are built into the calendar to make up as snow days, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And so, I'm suggesting that we add a third possible snow day makeup, being Easter Monday. And, you know, that Sunday is a busy day for the families, and I know that a lot of them would like to continue one more day into, one, one more day off, and then if we need to make it up, then we could take that, that day away. We've done that in the past, people like-
That would be the thirteenth. Then they go April thirteenth.
And then they would go one more day, one more day in the school year, which actually, the last day of school, I believe, for the students is that Monday, June twenty-second. So, we bring them to that Tuesday, June twenty-third.
All right, are you making a motion?
Yep.
Okay, so I've got a motion, do I have a second?
Okay.
I'll second.
You will second it? Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Discussion?
I, what I had to say.
Well, no, I, I had that marked down, too. You know, that's always a possibility, and just that the range of snow days that we've been getting, I think that the thirteenth would be a good day to throw in, and then if we need to take it back, we take it back.
Yeah, but I, I don't think, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Alfano, the intent of this calendar isn't to take anything back, the dates, if we don't use the snow dates-
Right.
-they will be off.
Oh, yeah, no, but I mean, if we needed a snow date-
If you need a snow date, we take it away, correct.
Those would be the first three days that you would take-
That would go.
In that order. February thirteenth, April thirteenth, and then it would be May twenty-second. Those would be the first three, because those would be the three days that would be built in. And your last day of school would be June twenty-third for students, and June twenty-fourth for teachers.
And, and I'm, I'm okay with that approach. My only concern would be that then starts to get us very late into the school year, and, and I've made this very clear, you know, given, unless we have significant adverse weather patterns, I've, I've always personally supported the one-eighty-two. So, I wouldn't want to give those days off in the event of no snow, and then end up scaling back the calendar to the one-eighty.
Before we get too far into this, what day is Easter next year?
Easter next year-
I thought it was April fifth.
Is before-
So, we already have Easter Monday off? Right? Aren't we, aren't we have third, isn't the third Good Friday? Fourth, fifth is Easter, and then the sixth to tenth is off?
No, I think we're off the e-
No.
I think Easter is the twelfth.
I think Easter is the twelfth.
Does anyone have it for sure?
Hold on, I have a-
I have the calendar, and both the fifth and the twelfth are blacked out, I'm assuming the fifth is-
Palm Sunday?
-Palm Sunday, and the twelfth is Easter.
I just, someone want to Google it?
Yeah, and I did, I did have that, I just-
When is Easter this year?
Twenty eighth. It's the twenty.
Well, if it's, if it's going from, it's, it's, it's going from-
When is it?
Everything I'm Googling is saying, uh-
It's Monday, it's Monday.
April fifth.
When is it?
No, it's Monday to Sunday.
April fifth, two thousand and fifty.
Yeah, so, we're off Easter Monday, it's kind of a, we have Good Friday, and then the follow-
We have the week after.
This year, we have the week before, next year, we have the week after Easter off, according to this calendar.
That's right, that's what we did, we pushed it, we pushed it-
Okay.
-after.
I mean, it's a whole-
Because it's Good Friday, third, four, five, six, so, Easter, right, Easter, right, Easter Mondays, Easter.
Hey, welcome to November.
Already off, part of vacation.
I had done the-
All right, is any, is anyone in the body opposed to withdrawing that motion as it's no longer relevant? Hearing no opposition, the motion is withdrawn. Any other comments on the calendar?
Yes. Has anybody taken note of the fact that in November, we are in school on the third, off on the fourth, in on the fifth, off on the sixth and seventh, in on the tenth, off on the eleventh?
Welcome to November.
It's-
How late you want to go into the year?
It just seems a little choppy to me.
Well, how late do you want to go into the year? You know, that's the problem.
Now, now, Veterans Day is the, is the eleventh, that's not observed, that's always observed on the day, the eleventh.
Always, always the eleventh.
It's all-
Eleventh day is eleventh hour, eleven.
It's a Tuesday.
Any thoughts or comments on that? Do you have any suggestions as to how to rectify it?
It's not going to stop.
Uh, it's, it's a tough one, because you're in and out, in and out, in and out.
Uh, yep.
You know, it's a pretty miserable month.
Okay, hearing no motions to rectify that, thank you for the observation.
Gave you heads up.
Any other comments on the calendar?
Yes, Mr. Syak, I have a comment on that. Last, or this past year, we had Columbus Day off. We're not going to have off Columbus Day this year.
Not as currently proposed.
I think that, that's the problem with the November, then that'd be another day you'd have to, you might as well just shut it down for a week.
Columbus Day's in October.
Yeah.
So, do students have a half day on Columbus Day, the staff is in for the full day?
Okay.
So, we're even, like, you got a head.
Yeah, we're even, yeah. Hey, we, we dealt with the Columbus Day issue.
Yeah, a lot.
Any other thoughts on the calendar?
Get the call from Italy again.
That's right.
And we will open to public before we approve this, in case anyone has any comments. All right, next, Dr. Alfano.
Co-curriculum. The Green Team will approve attendance of seven, seventeen Green Team members to go to the freeholders meeting on the date noted. Approve Eisenhower School PTO Spotted International Festival, a third-grade music concert. The high school's marching band will have the band festival at Hershey Park. The high school film society students will attend the Public Service Announcement Awards Program as noted. And Wilson School, the following extracurricular activities is noted in A, B, C, number six. Any questions with those? With none, moving to H. Weave the transportation as noted. Amend the transportation contract as noted in number two. Approve a retroactive trip as noted. And seventeen Board of Education trips as noted in number four, A through Q. That concludes my report.
Okay, are there any other comments or questions from the board in the superintendent's report? If anyone is voting no on anything not stipulated, now would be a good time to mention it so that we can discuss it if anyone has any questions. Okay, hearing none, we'll open it up to public on agenda items only. If you wish to speak, please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. If you wish not to be photographed, please let us know.
My name is Nina Obrik, I'm a teacher at the upper elementary school. I'll be quick, I know it's been a long night. Bonnie Brady's retirement was announced tonight, and if you know Bonnie, you know that she is the first person to get up to sing our praises when we do something well. I thought, we thought that it was right that one of us got up as well to say a few words. So, I was thinking of how it would happen tonight, and Mr. McEnon, I knew that you would say something wonderful about her, thank you. So, I thought that I would take the teachers' perspective. One thing that you may not know about Mrs. Brady is that no matter what she's doing, or how many things need her attention, she always has time for us, her teachers. She listens to our concerns, she offers her help, she solves our problems, she praises us when we do well, and she doesn't hesitate to call us out when we do not. And I've been on both ends of that. She cultivates a climate of respect and fairness, she inspires us to be better teachers and to be better people. Mrs. Brady gives without hesitation, she generally, genuinely cares about us, about our community, about our students, about her teachers. She's the kind of leader we need in this district. Her leaving saddened me because I think she has so much more to give, and I don't think she should be done yet. It's important that you know that your hard work and your talent and your loyalty were appreciated, your teachers appreciated it. Thank you for everything. Thank you.
Is she back there?
Yeah, she's-
Thank you for those accolades, thank you very much. Anyone else for public? I know that's a tough act to follow, but Ms. Marr is going to try.
I just wanted to publicly thank Mrs. Brady for all that she has done for the students and the staff over the years. It has been a pleasure to work with someone who is just so passionate, really about everything. The school, the students, the staff, the community, it has been an honor to work alongside of her, and I know we're going to miss her next year, so, congratulations, fun.
I just want to say, Bonnie, I told you so, I told you you could do it, and you've proven it by your teachers showing you how much they cared about you, so, I'm glad you listened to me one time. Thank you.
You haven't voted yet, you can still take back your letter. Anyone else for public? Okay, hearing none, we'll close public at this time, and roll call Mr. DeAndrea.
I need a motion first.
Oh, thank you. Mrs. DePinto has a motion, second by Mr. McEnon.
Got caught up in a moment.
Mr. Balka.
Yes, except items noted.
Mrs. Backo.
Yes, except noted.
Mrs. Bloom.
Yes.
Mr. Brzezinski.
Yes.
Mrs. DePinto.
Yes.
Mr. McEnon.
Yes.
Mrs. Trapp.
Yes.
Mr. Walsh.
Yes.
And Mr. Syak. Yes. Delegate to New Jersey School Boards, as I mentioned at a, a previous meeting, we've launched the National Stand Up for Public Schools Campaign. For those of you who watched the Academy Awards, when Steve McQueen received the award for Best Picture for twelve years a slave, I don't know if you noticed, but when he grasped the award, he was wearing one of NSBA Stand Up for Public Schools wristbands. He is a partner with us. In addition to that, we are working on our army of advocates to support public education. We have an army amassed now of four hundred thousand members of various educational organizations, two hundred thousand of them are from New Jersey. NJASA, the Superintendent's Association, has joined us, ASBO has joined us, the PTA has joined us, and the Principals and Supervisors Association has joined us. The one we're still waiting on is NJEA. We did meet with NJEA, actually, our executive director from New Jersey School Boards and the president of New Jersey School Boards, met with the executive director of NJEA and the president, and they're still thinking about it. So, Mrs. Bloom, if you still have any contacts with NJEA, if you would give them a call and strongly encourage them to sign on, because we would love to have it be four hundred thousand members from New Jersey supporting our public schools.
I will do what I can.
Thank you. And that concludes my report. Committee reports, did any committees meet?
Finance met, but we just finalized the budget, and we did that, so.
And you did a fine job. The only other thing I'll share is I spoke to Gwen Thornton, who's leading our superintendent search, and as of last week, twenty-seven individuals had picked up the application packet for the Sable Superintendent Search. Now, that's no guarantee that all twenty-seven will return, but she thought that was a solid number one week into the process, so, that's a good sign for us.
And it closes what, April tenth?
Yeah, I'm sorry, what?
It closes April tenth?
It closes April tenth.
Yep.
And then the last thing is the board discussed tonight in executive, as, as was mentioned, the school calendar as it pertains to this year. Given the large number of snow days which were incurred this year, the board is supportive of waiving the one-eighty-two student requirement and only going one-eighty, and then for the staff, their, their work year would also be reduced by the two days. We have not set a last day of school yet, because as much as spring is going to spring on Friday, we're still not a hundred percent sure if we're out of the snow belt. So, assuming we're out of the snow belt and there are no more days, the last day of school for students at this point will be June twenty-fourth, and the last day for faculty will be June twenty-fifth. I believe the twenty-fourth is a Tuesday, the twenty-fifth is a Wednesday. Again, that is subject to change if school is closed for any reason between now and those days. Any other comments under the committee reports? Under discussion, I need a member to sign on to negotiate with the principals. I put out the initial committee list. I know Mrs. Trapp wanted to switch committees, which I was able to accommodate with her. I know Mrs. Backo wanted off of one committee, which Mrs. DePinto was able to accommodate, but Mrs. DePinto and I can't be on every committee. So, I need someone else to step up in place of Mr. Balka, who does not want to serve on the principal negotiations committee, or cannot serve on the principal negotiations committee. I've been told if you leave people silent long enough, someone will speak.
So far, it's Beth and May. And Lucy can't, I would if I could.
If I, I'll serve if, if needed.
Okay. We have Mr. Walsh. Anyone opposed? Anyone else want to offer?
Mr. Walsh, our first meeting is next Tuesday at five o'clock.
That is correct.
Five, oh, five-thirty?
I'll, I'll contact you.
We'll get you to that.
I'll contact you, thank you.
But thank you very much, we appreciate it. Any other items for discussion?
Five-thirty.
Okay, hearing no other items for discussion, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, sorry.
Okay. It did come up in the, in the district highlights, and I did want to mention that I was in attendance at the Student Recognition Dinner that was provided by the Middlesex County School Boards, and I wanted to point out that we only still have this in Middlesex County because Mr. Syak and Dr. Alfano took it upon themselves to do what they could to get this funded. Other counties aren't doing it anymore, and the supervisors, I'm sorry, Superintendent's Association funds it for Middlesex County. There were sixty-some-odd students who were recognized, not only for academics, many of these kids were special ed students who have achieved. These are students who have big hearts and help other kids. It was really a very, very beautifully done dinner, and it was very heartwarming to see these kids get the recognition that they deserve, and sometimes don't always get. The other thing that I wanted to say, I was really excited to participate in, was the Read Across America, this was my first year doing it, and I got to read to students over at the Arleth School, and it was great fun, it was a very nice day, so I'm very pleased with that. And also, in case the public doesn't know it, we just got the letter from the Hall of Fame, I serve on that committee, too, that's separate from this. And we have the four honorees for this year. Denise Calello, class of nineteen ninety-one, Gregory Davis, class of nineteen eighty-seven, Mary Ann Gordon, class of nineteen seventy-four, and Glenn Methner, class of nineteen seventy-two. And of course, Mary Ann Gordon is one of our own special ed teachers, who's been a teacher for thirty-six years, and well-deserving of this honor, so I'm very pleased to announce that, too.
And I also want to encourage the members of the board to attend the, the event, it's a very, very nice event, and it's recognizing our, our alumni and our, our proud graduates, so I encourage the board, if you can, to save that date of May third. Any other comments for discussion? Okay, hearing none, I'll take a motion to adjourn.[1775.62]